Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Brea City Council meeting, Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025. I'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please let the record reflect that a quorum is present. This time, I'll call on John Payne to lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance. John?
In lieu of invocation, I would like to dedicate 60 seconds as a time of silent reflection and/or prayer to each one's personal choice. Thank you. If you'll please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve by John Payne, seconded by Teresa Centers? Is there any discussion? Jerry Little, Jerry, check your mic.
Your mic, Jerry.
I'd like to make a motion to amend and add a resolution to it. Bruce got the resolution there. So that would become Resolution Number 20-2025. Jerry, I actually gave my copy to you if you'd let me take a peek at that. Jerry Gilbert, let me take a look at that. Thank you. This would be a resolution related to God's provision, food pantry, and Brea Food Bank. So there's a motion to amend the agenda to add a Resolution Number 20-2025.
I'll second.
Is there a second by Katie Starksman? Is there any discussion on the motion to amend to add Resolution Number 20-2025? Seeing none, I'll ask for a voice vote. All in favor of the motion to amend the agenda to add Resolution 20-2025, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries, and we're back to the original motion on approval of the agenda as amended. Is there any further discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, I request a motion to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. The motion carries, and the agenda is approved as amended. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our November 18th, 2025 meeting. Is there a motion to approve by John Payne? Is there a second? By Jerry Little? Is there any discussion, corrections, need for changes to the minutes? Seeing none, I'll request a voice vote. All in favor of the motion to approve the minutes from November 18th, 2025, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. The motion carries, and the minutes are approved. Yes.
Where'd you put that motion after the amendment?
That would come in, Jerry, it would become the new Number 10. It would be read after Resolution Number 19-2025.
Okay.
And it would be Resolution Number 20-2025.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Robin, if you'll let me have the sign-in sheet, please. Next item on the agenda is public comment, and we do have one citizen that would like to make comments. And I'll just read this real quick, and then we'll get to Ms. Mangus. So if you want to come on up while I read this, the public is given the opportunity to speak at the city council during the public comment portion of the meeting. Any public comments exceeding three minutes should be scheduled through the mayor's office. When recognized by the mayor, please go to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Comments should be business-oriented, and we ask for no inappropriate language or naming of any person individually during your comments. And business-oriented is defined as any business item on the agenda, including ordinances, municipal orders, and resolutions, along with comments related to services provided by the city of Brea. Ms. Mangus, you have the floor. Welcome.
Hello, everybody. Laura Mangus, 54-year Brea citizen. Since Mayor Fraley says he's in frequent contact with Mr. Yanes, the CEO of Brea St. Joseph Hospital, I'm wondering how the hospital will continue financing the new equipment and services Mr. Yanes discussed at the last city council meeting. In light of possible unforeseen negative financial consequences, does the city of Brea contribute any to the financing of Brea Hospital? In addition to the Medicaid cuts, it appears insurance premiums will be raised two or three times their current rates for many people, starting in January. Some people will simply opt out of insurance altogether because they won't be able to afford it. How would this affect the hospital's bottom line? If people won't be turned away because of their inability to pay, will the hospital absorb the loss of that financing, or will the people just incur medical debt? And lastly, will the council consider Reverend Gilbert's expressed wish for citywide forum, possibly in the new year, so that Brea citizens can be heard and be able to be in direct conversation with the council about their concerns? And also be able to share ideas about how we can all work together to solve some of the problems that Reverend Gilbert reminded us are sure to increase in the coming years? Thank you.
Thank you. And I will address a couple of those during the mayor's comments, so thank you for your comments. The next item on the agenda is Madison County International Committee update. This is related to our sister-region relationship with Hokuto City, Japan. I'm happy to welcome back Kent Gilbert, who is also the chairman, I'm sorry, the president, we just figured that out, the president of the Madison County International Committee, along with a couple of the delegation who went with us to Japan not long ago.
Indeed.
Kent, welcome. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, city council, and thanks to all of you who are watching. We're getting the, we need to put the projectors on so we can show you a few of the pictures. As the mayor mentioned, I am the president of the Madison County International Committee, of which Brea City is a founding partner. The International Committee was founded in the late 80s to manage a sister-city relationship. We were invited into by the members of Hokuto, Japan, and the city of Brea, the city of Richmond, and the Madison County Fiscal Court, along with both our universities in Madison County, were founding partners in forming the group that has managed that relationship for 35, 36 years now. Let's see, if we can turn on the slideshow, I will, there's some behind me, but this one's not on, is it? All right, very good. Well, at least I can see over here. I can see on mine. You'll have to look behind you, if you're in the room, you can see the show there. This year, we took a delegation of 13 of us, traveled to a sister-city. Hokuto, Japan is just about two hours west of Tokyo, and you can see this little, teeny tiny red dot that shows you where we are. It's situated on the slope of one set of mountains that leads down to the most famous mountain in Japan, which is, of course, Mount Fuji. It has about the same geographic area as Madison County, which is why we're paired with a city there but a county here. The population there is about 56,000 people, and just like Madison County, it's comprised of lots of little communities that are sort of distributed around the county area. So as we have sort of Waco and Brea and Richmond, they have many little townings and committees that are, make a single administrative unit. They are known for, among other things, a lot of things that keep us connected. They're known for having the greatest amount of sunshine. They've got arts and crafts going. They have incredible agriculture that grow prize-winning rice and incredible indoor vegetables, one of the things that they have put a lot of investment into recently. And they also have pure mineral water. They produce more than 50% of Japan's mineral water consumption, partly because of the purity of the water and the beautiful mountain scenery that they have managed to preserve as a natural environment. Recreation, obviously, goes right alongside that. And those of you who are familiar with some of Kentucky's finest will be glad to know that the Suntory Hakshu Distillery is also located in our sister-city. That's the distillery that owns Maker's Mark here in Kentucky, as well as Jim Beam. We have a sister-city relationship because of this man, whose name is Paul Rush. Paul Rush was a Kentuckian who found his way to Japan in the early 20s to do earthquake relief, ended up staying. After being briefly detained and arrested during World War II, as all foreign nationals were, he was at a prisoner exchange. He returned afterwards as part of MacArthur's staff to rebuild Japan, and his affection for the people of Japan, and in particular, this mountainous region where he had had a deep connection, really grew. He found the people, after years of war, starving and without medical care. He was able to return to Kentucky and to southern Indiana, where he petitioned local families and farmers to help. He said, "We should rebuild. These people deserve our care." So he got John Deere to donate a single tractor with which the whole community was able to plant more rice in a single week than they could in an entire season. He also convinced farmers to send a herd of Jersey cows over, which did well in mountainous areas. But the Japanese had never actually had any milk culture, so he had to form an agency to help train people how to care for cows and milk them. And the area where we stayed and where we, continues that tradition, the descendants of those Jersey cattle are still producing milk and the highest-quality ice cream, butter, yogurt that Japan sees, that they're world-renowned now for that. I was asked to bring special greetings from Mayor Oshiba Kunehiko, who is the current mayor of Hokuto City. He was elected in 2024. He was an enthusiastic supporter of this program. In fact, he made a special detour on his way home from his own foreign travels to meet the mayor at the rest stop on our way up from our airport trip when we arrived. So it was great. He sends his greetings and is hoping for great prosperity for the city of Brea, Richmond, and of course Madison County in the new year as well. Here you can see a few of the things of the activities we had. We had an official city briefing as a delegation. You see the mayor there and many of the city officials, and our own mayor, Mayor Bruce Fraley, receiving and exchanging business cards. And here's the delegation. We were seated in the council chambers and invited to bring questions about the economy, the arts, what are the challenges, what economic struggles are they having, what are the situations with various elder care? We discussed all the manner of enterprises that were represented on the delegation, and I'll share with you more of that as we go along. We were given the opportunity to ask these great questions, and I think had extremely thoughtful and prepared answers. There was a whole team of people who's just there to answer our questions and to share a little bit about what are they doing for development? How are they responding to world pressures on inflation and their own economic, political changes? It was very, very well done. Here's the entire delegation, standing in front of the Hokuto City flag you see on one side, and then the Kentucky flag on the other with their welcome banner, and our two mayors in the center. This is the first delegation we've had in some while, when one of the city mayors of Madison County has been able to attend, and so there was great excitement on the Japanese side to have a live mayor in captivity. So thank you, Bruce, for being part of that. The delegates on this year's trip included, of course, Bruce and his wife Linda, who's a legal assistant, Colin Weckman, who's Brea College employee of Public Safety, Miranda Weckman, who works for Partners for Rural Impact, Nicholas Cole, who's Madison County School Education Coordinator, Christina Cole, his sister, who is a cosmetologist here in Madison County, Eric Crimmins, who's a paramedic, Dr. A.J. Chandler, who's the Madison County Middle School principal, Kristi Winkler, the executive director of Morning Point Assisted Living in Richmond, Valerie Henderson, our quilt and fabric artist, who's with us here tonight, Amanda Lazertek, who's the director of broom craft in Brea College, Destiny White, who is a Brea College student and a broom artist, and of course myself, as tour manager, delegate whisperer, and president of the exchange. Some of the activities that your delegation engaged in and that we were asked to report back to you about, there was, of course, a wonderful welcome party. You see a picture there with the artists. They had a great dance team that welcomed us in a lavish festival. We had the city activities that we talked about with the status briefing. One of the special things that happened this year is we were offered a tea ceremony, a very formal tea ceremony, in the home of Paul Rush, which is this beautiful space where he once welcomed the emperor and empress of Japan, and we were able to use some of the same tea implements that he served them at the time, which was very special. There was a cultural tour of the city's museums. Our sister-city has a number of small, extraordinarily interesting museums, including the world's only Keith Haring Museum. If you're familiar with the sort of stick and blocky figures, you'll see some of them. A museum that included seemingly everything that you ever could have ever gotten out of a Cracker Jack box in the 60s and 70s, 2 million different articles of wonderful, amazing toys, and there's a picture later on of the pinball wizard mayor that we have with us, playing some of the old games. And Valerie beat him, just to say. We also had a chance to ride, they have a wonderful horse culture where they are. The Samurai horse breed, the Kiso, is maintained in our sister-city as a rare, rare breed. Sadly, it poured rain. The one day, it just poured on us, and we all said it was great to ride, and the lawyers all said it was not great to ride. We were not, that liability insurance was not going to cover crazy Americans on wet horses. So we did have, we got to see them and learn more about that culture. We had a tour of the Mount Fuji area, there down the slopes, and antique shopping in the Hakshu, an old antique area that was fascinating, to see 300 different vendors of antique and craft items down the street of one of the little hamlets in our sister-city. It was a great opportunity to see some insight into the regular, regular lives of people. The main, we were, the main attraction, the delegation was the main attraction, at the two-day Yatsugatake County Fair. That's, Yatsugatake is the county in which our sister-city resides, and in honor of Paul Rush's 100th anniversary of coming to Japan, that was, came in 26, in '25, the fair was re-instituted after a six-year hiatus. This is a fair that, somewhat like our Spoonbread Festival here, attracts tons of thousands of visitors and many craft vendors, food vendors, but the highlight of the show were our craftspeople at the Kentucky booth. This is the first year that Jeff Farmer could not participate. Jeff Farmer has been on every single delegation since 1988 and has demonstrated at this fair his blacksmithing field. He was on the poster, but due to caring for his parents, he was unable to attend this year, and so we were very, very lucky to have Valerie Henderson and also Amanda Lazertek and Destiny White, who did a brilliant job of connecting to all of the visitors who came to learn more about what happens primarily in our craft area. We also had games for the children. We had information about Brea, Richmond, the county, the schools that were both in Japanese and in English, and we distributed those widely. City sightseeing in Tokyo was our, was our final part of the delegation trip, but included the Sensoji Buddhist temple, about 1,200 years old, manga mania, the, I think, Miranda and her husband got a chance to indulge in the manga mania, broom-making quests. I think we found people, they found some handmade brooms in Japan they wanted to check out, and we had, of course, great, amazing food adventures. Here's some pictures, just to show you a little about. This is the welcome delegation, the two mayors exchanging greetings and gifts, the lavish feast that we had, some dancing going on. This is pictures of the tea ceremony. After we received tea, then members of the delegation were invited to learn and actually perform the ceremony or learn to make the tea and dish the water, and Miranda there is playing a Japanese instrument, like a giant dulcimer called a koto. If you've been to Richmond's Koto Restaurant in the mall, Richmond Mall, it's named after that instrument. Koto is a beautiful stringed instrument that plays any number of tunes. I think Miranda managed to get amazing grace out of it.
I got something else.
Oh, there you go. Here's some pictures of the fair. It is a Kentucky-themed fair, and so the Kentucky delegation, we were treated like royalty. The mayor gave a special address to 15,000 people on the gathered lawn. People bring their dogs. There's this giant arch with the Kentucky flag, and you can see some pictures here, working with the children. Here's Valerie and our broom makers, and Linda, of course, showing off Mount Fuji. Here's some other things from the places we visited in other places, the Keith Haring Museum, Tokyo, and all of its amazing, amazing variety and crowds, some of the manga, and of course, here's our pinball, here's our pinball mayor, right there. So what do we do when we're not going to Japan? MCIC works pretty much year-round, and we have several current programs and some in development, and I wanted to just highlight a few of them. We host, of course, the official exchanges. That happens every other year. We go in odd years, and they come to visit us in even years. So in fall of 2026, we'll be receiving and looking to bring them before you as those who might welcome them. We also have a middle-school homestay program. This is one of the oldest programs going for now 30-plus years, that takes 10 middle-school students from Madison County and embeds them with families in Japan for a week, and then those same families exchange, and they come here. They were just here this summer, and thanks to many of you, thanks to the mayor and many of the council members and lots of businesses here who helped support that endeavor and welcomed those kids and helped provide some activities for them in Madison County. Our kids will go in 2026, in the summer of 2026. We also have now a very successful, relatively new, started in 2022, a high school homestay exchange between Model High School in Richmond and Corio High School in Hokuto City. This is now going for the third, they're in their fourth cycle. The Hokuto students come in March, that same group gets together when the Americans go in October. So they see each other in the same calendar year. It's been a very strong exchange. We are looking to expand that and hoping that we might engage another high school and get to the southern end of the county to include something like that here. We also provide, every five years or so, we welcome a host of homestay students who come to Brea Community School. They come for English immersion, and this is a wonderful program. Pandemic has sort of messed up how we've been able to do that, so it's been a minute since we had that opportunity, but we're hoping that that may be returning in the future. I want to say a little bit about what's in development. First of all, the artist-to-artist collaboration homestay. I'm going to give a minute to Valerie to say a word about that. We are starting up this year, something that was old and part of our past, which is an elementary art school exchange. Obviously, young people are that young, too young to travel, but teachers on both sides of the Pacific have chosen a theme, and we will be engaging young people to draw and make art. Then the art will be both digitized, and we will physically transport that art. They will bring their side when they come next year. We will then take ours when they go back, and both sides will have a chance to display. We already have the cooperation of the Richmond Area Arts Council and the Brea Arts Council, both of whom have agreed to provide space, and some of the libraries have said we would love to have it after them, so we'll be able to have this wonderful exchange from 1th through 3rd graders. And finally, an opportunity that's come about largely because of our travel there, as the Yatsugatake County Fair will be happening every year from this point on, according to their mayor, but how will we have Kentucky folks present? We won't be sending a delegation in 2026, they'll be coming here. So we are, oops, let me get rid of that. No, that's not helpful. So we are looking to expand an artist-to-artist delegation. We're looking to think about how we might create opportunities for local artists in Madison County who might go early, work with another partner artist in Japan, then together they might exhibit at the Kentucky tent. So we're working on that. I wanted to say, give Valerie a little chance to talk about some of the collaboration that she has already begun and that was sort of the inspiration for some of that. You see her, her artwork, and I'll let her explain what you're looking at.
Thanks, Kent. Well, it's actually both my work and the young woman, woman of my age, standing in the photo as well, Hatsue. She was part of the 2024 delegation that came here, and I had the opportunity to have her, the translator, and another person, part of the delegation, another female, they came to my home one evening, I think it's after they had gone to the Mexican restaurant for dinner. They came to my home and looked at my studio. I might have shared a little bit of bourbon with them, but we had a really good conversation, and Hatsue and I had an immediate understanding of what each other was, what our intentions were and what we were working on together. Hatsue is a shell artist. She produces what is referred to as Sailor Valentines. And you see two pieces there. That is something that we worked on together via, I made the background for that, my felt. These two pieces, the first one on the right is for summer, and that's water and the sea, and she has her shells around it. The second one is fall, and so again, that's my felt as a background, and she is, the really large piece that's over the corner is a sea urchin. She only uses shells. And so that was really fun. We did that, you know, I made the background, I sent it to her, and then she put the shells on it, and I saw them for the first time together during our trip. She had an exhibit at the city museum. And so our plans are to do two more, to do spring and winter. And I've had a conversation with Mayor Fraley, and we would like to have those four pieces travel back and forth between Brea and Hokuto City. And so I will begin work in January on the backgrounds for winter and spring. We talked about colors. Of course, there have to be cherry blossoms in the spring one, but anyway, it is this true exchange of ideas, and that was what was so rewarding, to meet someone totally new and have conversations with them via text, emails, and then to see them in person and to work out this idea, because we understand that that is how artists work. We really like to collaborate. And these, when we did these first two collaborations, we weren't sure where it would go, but we wanted to try and present it to the group and see if there was a possibility. She actually, at one point, I found out that I was going on the delegation three days before they left, but she was trying to find a way to get me there. She was, she was going to pick me up at the airport, she was going to let me stay in her home, and right about that point, we found out that unfortunately Jeff couldn't go. So anyway, she made sure that I met artists that she works with and talks to at the fair. I made sure that, I took her to the Healy Whitney Museum in Lexington, because if you've been there, you remember they have the Shell Grotto. I thought she was going to hyperventilate, because it's an entire room of shells. But anyway, that, I think it just kind of comes back to me that art is often what does begin conversations. They already have a really beautiful printed art and craft guide for the region that I was given when I went in 2023. They gave it to me again when I was there this past year, and I thought, why couldn't we do something like that? But it lists all of the cultural things in the area in the prefecture, and so that's just a little bit about our conversation, and I welcome any questions you might have about it. It was a really great experience.
Let me give the microphone to Miranda Weckman, just to share a little bit from her delegate experience as well.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I just wrote a few sentences to share about my experience, and this was my first delegation trip to Japan, so I just wrote down a few thoughts beforehand. Being selected to attend the 2025 Japanese delegation to our sister-city, Hokuto City, has truly been a priceless experience I will carry with me for the rest of my life. Not only was I able to make stronger connections with my fellow Madison County delegates, but I was able to meet and form many new friendships and relationships with previous Hokuto City delegates, citizens, and city officials, even including the mayor of Hokuto City. The memories of laughter, joy, and new experiences, along with new friendships and learnings, makes this trip hold a special place in my heart. I've learned so much, but most importantly, that although we live on different sides of the earth, in different time zones, I was very jet-lagged, and even with a difference in language, we are so similar to one another in so many ways, gratitude, humor, kindness, justice, joy, and more. Being there had me feeling right at home, with beautiful mountains and a community that reminds me so much of our Appalachian home here in Madison County. As I close this statement, I just want to express my gratitude to participate in this journey, and I love being a part of this community in this town, and I truly recommend others to try this opportunity, not only to participate in future delegations, but to get to know our sister-city delegates when they delegations, but to get to know our sister city delegates when they visit us next year. Participation really does showcase that we are all God's children, and although we have our differences, we are more alike than many of us know. Thanks.
Well, as we pointed out, there is a fall delegation coming to us in the fall of 2026, and I commend that to you and hope that you might be participating in every way. There will be, both cities then will often host a banquet. We're working on those plans. We often have the opportunity to show them the cities, the facilities. The fire department has been so gracious in years past to take them up on the fire truck, the extension ladder, always a big hit. Thank you for that. We have a lot of chances to see exactly, though we come from different places, the very thing that you said, Miranda, that the exchange of ideas continues to instigate great collaboration, but also great ideas. I think there are many ways in which both communities on both sides have shared ideas, have shared commerce, have found ways to learn from each other's departments, whether they be fire, police, or tourism, and have found ways to collaborate that make, to make the world a little smaller and a little less divided. So thank you for being part of the Madison County endeavor that promotes this. I think it demonstrates great leadership, that you all support it. It certainly allows kids and adults to reach around the world for something that is, turns out, feels like home when you get there. So to closing, I just wanted to see, there are several here who have been to Hokuto City. If you have been on a delegation trip, could you raise your hands? I know the two of us, we've had a couple in the room. And I've provided on your table, you have a copy of the slideshow, but you also have a little sort of a brief synopsis of the work of the MCIC. That was written by Andy McDonald, who has been a longtime supporter and wrote a book on Paul Rush, so thank you for that incredible work. I commend the work to you. Paul Rush was an amazing instigator, and they came to Kentucky to find a sister city because they thought they had met the finest example of an American. And so when they reached out after his death for a international relationship, they came to Kentucky because they thought the finest people must live here. I dare say they're right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kent, and thank you, Miranda and Valerie. I will open it up for the council if you have any questions or comments for the delegates that are here. Questions or comments? Seeing none, Kent, Miranda, Valerie, thank you again, and Kent, I appreciate your leadership and keeping us all corralled and pointed in the right direction.
Expect memos to come.
For your leadership on the Madison County International Committee. So we'll be looking forward to working with you throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, the next item on the agenda, we do have another presentation. This is about the Enrich One Stop, and I'm happy to introduce you to and welcome Dan Kirstein, who is the co-founder of Enrich. Dan, welcome, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Could I trouble you to pass these around? Would you mind to take one? Thank you so much. My name is Daniel Kirstein. I'm with Enrich. My wife and I, India, co-founded Enrich back in 2020, and honestly, in pursuit of, I guess what Dr. Rush really just demonstrates for our community, my wife, a former foster care regional director in Berea, and I, now a police lieutenant in the city of Richmond, we were just praying about a way that we could give back to our community that we hadn't before, just looking to do more, like many people have before us. And you know, sometimes you have to be careful what you pray for, because he answered our prayers and pulled us out. We stepped out in faith and got to start Enrich in 2020 with a pretty simple mission, and that was just to establish, maintain, and operationalize the most effective outreach methods between our community partners that we possibly could. We saw a lot of community partners. We saw a lot of good work happening in Richmond, Berea, Waco, Boonsboro, Poozy, all the places. But we also saw the opportunity that we worked together. We believed that we could, we could interweave, if you will, a lot of the efforts that were being already, already put forth in our community to make them even a little bit more effective and a little bit more efficient. So we set out on a mission in 2020. We went public with our mission, strongly faith-based, just to help people with what we call alternative resumes initially. We had a vision for a restaurant. That vision is still the same for anybody who has been following us since day one. The only difference is maybe not pancakes, but I charge you maybe something better. We're really excited to bring to our downtown Richmond location significant support, just to give you a very quick overview from the community financially, spiritually, emotionally, physically, overhauling over 100-year-old building in the downtown area of Richmond to make it a hub where people from all walks of life could come and find meaning and belonging in a comfortable, familiar space to open up and talk about community issues and a lot of other things. So now that space is soon to be a restaurant. It's a very large space. It also has a community room, and I'm proud to say, probably most proud in that, in that space as it stands, that that community room was home to a series of meetings, town halls, if you will, that we had with community partners from both Richmond, Berea, greater Madison County. We had almost 80 organizations represented where we came, and we talked simply and with no barriers, not a lot of rules, but just kind of bluntly, if you will, but with love and grace about what's working, what's not working, and what we could do better. Nobody had the golden key in their pocket, just kind of being vulnerable with each other and talking about what we could do better. And through that, I bet many of you all will not be surprised to hear that there were some common tunes that you could hear going around the room from the different organizations, some of which I even see in the room tonight that were able to join us, and transportation, childcare, barriers to recovery, all kinds of things that you are very familiar with and many communities across our country are. But one thing that really resonated in those specific meetings was the need for a one-stop resource and referral hub where we could all point our finger, if you will, to one location, one starting point, if you will, where we could really get people intentional, meaningful care, connected with the resources that so many people in our community are already doing so well. And I must clarify briefly that it's not that Enrich or the One Stop does all of these things in-house. We don't. We do some things, we do some things well, but really we rely on our community partners that we vet and we meet with and we go and we visit and we learn about, that we can share these referrals with them so we can connect people with those resources. So Enrich, the parent organization, then births the One Stop Resource and Referral Hub of Madison County. We realize we're on to something pretty good. The community just absolutely surrounds us with support. And from the rip, we are proud to tell you that in my office, I've got two copies. I've got the Madison County copy, and I've got the copy for wherever the next place the One Stop lands. And I'm really excited to tell you that there's already been, in fact, I think in the last two weeks, three other counties reach out looking to start One Stops in their communities. I'm proud to tell you that we have the first one, and it serves all of our community. Honored to be here to share a little bit about it tonight, but I will also be upfront that there's no way I could communicate the magnitude and everything that they do in the short amount of time that I have, and I don't want to waste your time. So what I want to do just briefly is plant some seeds, give you the opportunity to reach out to us, ask any questions, anytime you want to come and take a tour, you're more than welcome, and just give you a 60-second overview of what the One Stop looks like. When you, the One Stop is a physical location in downtown Richmond right now. My dream is to open a location in Berea as soon as possible. We're actually on the hunt right now. We're working with some people in Berea to look very modest office space. We don't require a lot, just to put a, what we call a resource navigator on the ground in Berea so that we can start connecting people here as well with those resources. Right now, about 13% of the people that we do see in Richmond come from Berea, drive all the way up to see us, and we're able to serve them as well. But I just believe in reducing barriers anywhere that we can, and there's no reason that we can't be, we can't be in Berea as well. So excited to bring that to you all soon. The One Stop has served 795 unique individuals and families since its launch in mid-July. So just a little over, what is that, four or five months? Remarkable. I can tell you all, excuse me, that I designed a lot of the backend systems just to track data. I'm big into analytics, projecting how we're doing, what we can do better, what we can share with our community partners, what we can project in the community as far as trends go. I can tell you that I was on a high side. I was expecting 1,000 in a year, and 795 just really, I think it solidifies the need for this in our community. We serve these 795 individuals in a couple of different ways. One is by walking into the One Stop at 409 North Third Street in Richmond. The second way is through court. We are in district court, all three dockets, and you can be referred to from the bench, or we can meet with you in the courtroom. We also go into the jail. You can find us online, you can call us. Those are really the five main ways that you can get ahold of the One Stop. We really, we aim at reducing barriers. We actually seek out barriers in the community with the intent that we, I've got, I've got an incredibly skilled staff that literally looks for the challenge of reducing barriers in our community, and they're pretty good at it. So they reduce the barriers. You come in, you tell them what you might be there for. I use Adam, our program director, as an example. Adam comes into the One Stop, he meets with a resource navigator. We have a pretty intentional intake, and this is where it's a little bit different than things we've tried in the past, myself included. A lot of times, when Adam comes into the One Stop and he's looking for a couch, I'll connect him with the ministry that offers couches, and there are some, they do great work, excuse me, and he should be connected with them. However, I think a lot of times we missed an integral piece there, and that was an intentional conversation that might unveil why we need a couch. Not that everybody has to or will even offer that up, but what if we gave everybody the opportunity to do so? So exactly what happens when you walk in, you sit down with a navigator, they get your demographic information, because we are grant-funded, and there's just things that I have to report, and then we get into the most important things, and that's, Adam, what are you here for? You're here for a couch that's outstanding. We have a backend assessment, if you will, that is very informal. In fact, most people don't even know it's happening, but it's something we're really proud of that we have built from the ground up, and that is a self-sufficiencies outcomes matrix that's tailored specifically to our organization and the needs of our community. Big words that just mean, when we sit down and we talk about Adam's couch, we're also going to talk about Adam's financial status, his employment, his transportation, his childcare, his digital literacy, his adult literacy, passively, and just normal, intentional, meaningful conversation. And through that, we might find out that Adam is in need of a couch because he recently relocated to Madison County, specifically to Berea. He came to Berea really quickly and abruptly, which offers the opportunity to talk a little bit about why, you know, if they're willing to divulge what brought you here so quickly. And this is actually a real example, we're able to, this is not Adam specifically, but somebody else we've served recently, we're able to unveil that they're actually a victim of domestic violence, that just is recently fleeing a situation from another state. They came to stay with a sister here in Berea, and they are in need of a lot more than just a couch. And could we serve the couch and see them on their way? We absolutely could, and we have for many years. But what if we took it a step further? Because we have so many people in this room and abroad that do such great work across so many different categories that you see on the back of those little pamphlets. What if we could also connect with school supplies and food baskets and all of the things that we also do so well? So we connect, and then we monitor. We have an analytical system on the backend called Find Help that we partner with, and that allows us to communicate with our community partners. So not only can I make the referral to the partner, but also I can track that the referral was answered, that it was fulfilled, and we can also track to see also if the client or the person we're assisting went. For a long time, many of you are public, well, we're all public servants up here, many of you all understand, we make the referral, and a lot of times we don't hear back. That's never been a promise, it's not something we expect, but we have created a closed-loop HIPAA-compliant software. We did not create it. We partner with the company that did create it to bring it to Madison County where we can actually send the referral out, we can see that it was viewed, see that it was answered, see that it was fulfilled or not. And that's really important, especially for us public servants, to see resources that are working, and maybe even more importantly, resources that are not working. Not so that we can criticize them or publicly ridicule them, but that so we can surround them. Maybe it's a duplicated service. Maybe it's a situation where I can schedule an intentional lunch and say, hey, look, you're doing the same thing in this lane as they're doing in this lane. What if, do you know these, you know, does A know B? Would you like me to introduce you? Is this something you'd be interested in? And we can talk about long-term sustainability and efficiency. That is a breathtaking 60-second overview, and much longer than 60-second overview, of what the One Stop is. It is an intentional opportunity for the community to come together and surround the people that need it most. Our target, our target population is not any specific population, it's any population that needs it. I myself have used the services of the One Stop for insurance. It's great. We really target, though, if you had to narrow it down for grant purposes, we really target people that are either experiencing homelessness or an active recovery, or that have neither of those things and are just what's called as ALIS. And of course, yeah, ALIS, and please help me, it escapes me in the moment, but above low income or income constrained but employed, so people with a job, honestly, many of us, people with a job that are above low income but still not quite making it as they would see fit for the needs of their families and their loved ones. So we really just, we pride ourselves on being very transparent, being really open. We publish a lot of the data. We partner with a lot of the local collegiate organizations to come up with ways that we can actually project trends in our community. It's a lot. But I just wanted to spark your interest, communicate a little bit to you, give you the chance to ask some, some real quick questions if you wanted to, but most importantly, just to ask for your support. I don't come here with any ask, but only to offer you all things. Everything that I have, you have access to, except that your support means a lot, and it takes the entire community to make this thing work, this One Stop work. We're really excited to see what it brings into the future, and I would love to talk more or offer any of you all a private tour, a public tour, you can bring your families, your organizations, whatever would interest you, to the One Stop anytime that you would like.
Good. Thank you, Daniel.
Thanks, Mayor.
Questions from the council for Daniel or about Enrich? Katie?
Thank you for that presentation. Really grateful to have you all here. So you mentioned the restaurant. What are some of your other longer-term goals, or what's your, what's your vision as you continue to affect change in Madison County?
That's a great question, and I wish I knew, I wish I knew the whole thing, and I say that because five years ago, when the Lord laid this on my wife and I's heart, we actually laid out the mission for the organization, which is what I restated at the beginning there, with no clue what a One Stop was, but it literally, if you looked at the One Stop model and you looked at the mission, you could, you could tell those, that was, I mean, there's no coincidence there. And that didn't come until roughly year three or four of our, of our organization just being over five years old. So the long term, I don't know. What I can tell you is that the restaurant, we're partnering with a second-chance employer out of Lexington that's well-known, a lot of people know them. That is finally in the final works, that is just, that is an endeavor. And if there's any restaurant operators in this room, I applaud you. That is quite the endeavor, but the restaurant, the venue space that's open to the community, we host AA, NA, Celebrate Recovery, we host a slew of meetings, there's church that meets there on Sundays, all the public events that you can imagine, there's sober Super Bowls and all the things for the recovery community as well. And then the One Stop, though, has taken off in a way that I did not anticipate. So it could, it could continue to grow and become a regional program that could quickly spread across the state, and that obviously is not anything that I anticipated even a year ago, Mayor, when we first talked about this coming to fruition. So Ms. Katie, the real answer is that I don't know, but I can tell you the trajectory is to continue to refine this One Stop model. I think that we have something really unique, and the amount of community partners that we have make us unique. There is nothing like this that I have been able to find through a lot of research anywhere in the country. There's some great One Stops, if you will, that have three or four partner organizations. They do it incredibly, incredibly effective for their specific disciplines, but nothing so broad that it covers the categories that you see on the back, the way that we've divvied them up and operationalized it. Yes, ma'am.
Other questions or comments for Daniel? John?
Just quickly, I'd like to say, I appreciate the presentation. My day job at the Public Library, we're already sharing, sharing this information with the public at large, and I wish you all every success.
Thank you, John. Appreciate your partnership.
I just want to say thank you for what you all are doing in our community. I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. It's truly an honor, it really is.
Yeah.
Well, something tells me we haven't seen the end of Daniel, so we'll have you back sometime, Daniel, maybe do a little update at some point in the future.
Absolutely.
And again, you know, I know you're looking in Berea, and we, hopefully we can connect you to the right people.
Absolutely.
And if you need us, you know where we're at.
Yes.
Thank you again.
Thank you all so much.
Thanks for coming to present.
Thank you.
All right. All right, good presentations. And moving forward, we will now move to item nine on your agenda, which is Resolution Number 19-2025, granting unity communications franchise agreement. Mr. Gilbert?
I'll summarize Resolution Number 19-2025 by title. A resolution of the city of Berea, Kentucky, granting unto Kinetic ABS Kentucky LLC its successors and assigns the right franchise and privilege for a period of 20 years from December 31, 2025, to acquire, construct, and maintain in the city of Berea, Kentucky, the necessary facilities for the operation and maintenance of a telephone and communication services system for public and private use, and for the use and occupy the public streets and highways, avenues, alleys, bridges, and public places for such purposes, and prescribing the terms and conditions thereof.
All right, these, this is the Resolution Number 19-2025. Is there a motion to approve and adopt the resolution? By Katie, is there a second?
So.
By Jerry Little, is there any discussion on Resolution Number 19-2025? Teresa?
20 years of what we have, have you been doing this for a matter of 20 years?
I'll have to, I'll have to defer to Sean, because we're working with the, an attorney that we work with specifically on telecommunications. Sean?
Yeah, we are working with Linda Aine.
She's our attorney that helps us with all of these communication things that you've seen before. I cannot verify if 20 years is too long or not. That's just what she put in, in her recommendations for this resolution. I think if you would like for me to, to look into that a little further and reduce that.
Whether it's too long or not, I just think it's unusual.
Yeah. I don't think I've been here long enough to know if that is.
And I would tell you that this could be renewed after a 20-year period. The other observation I would have, this is related to Windstream. And what, I would be surprised if in 20 years we look up and there hasn't been some type of a merger or an acquisition that requires that. So and that would end up eventually with another, another agreement.
And that is what this is, Mayor and Council. This is a merger between Windstream and Unity, the Connect ABS Kentucky LLC. It's a merger with another fiber side of everything. So they're looking to expand. They're expanding outside of our jurisdiction and city limits. So doesn't really affect us currently, other than they're just merging with Windstream.
Other, other discussion on the motion? Other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, our request of voice vote, all in favor of the motion to approve and adopt Resolution 19-2025, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. The motion carries and Resolution Number 19-2025 is approved and adopted. The next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 20-2025. Mr. Gilbert?
Whereas ensuring that persons in the City of Berea have sufficient food to eat is of paramount importance to the government of the City of Berea, Kentucky. And whereas the City of Berea has determined that supporting the two local food banks' provision of foodstuffs to those in need due to the gap in Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, also known as SNAP, payments due to the recent federal government shutdown serves a valid public purpose by promoting nutritional food for those in need thereof. And whereas the food banks agree to utilize the funds provided hereunder for the sole purpose of purchasing foodstuffs for those in need due to, due to the gap in SNAP payments due to the recent federal government shutdown and distributing same to those persons. And whereas, food banks agree that they may only use the funds for expenses directly related to the project as detailed above and to maintain comprehensive records and submit reports to the city within 30 days. And whereas the city council desires to approve the donation of $2,500 each to the food banks. Now therefore be it resolved that's one, that the city council finds that and determines as follows. The donation of the sum of $2,500 to the Berea Food Bank and $2,500 to God's Provision Food Pantry constitute a public purpose for the prevention of hunger among the people in the City of Berea. B, the donations are subject to appropriate connection and control provisions to ensure the appropriations made to such organizations be earmarked and used for a public purpose and subjected to proper budgeting, documentation, and approval. Two, that the mayor is authorized to execute a memorandum of understanding with each of the recipients of the donations as attached here too. Three, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its passage.
Is there a motion to approve and adopt Resolution Number 20-2025? Motion by Cora Jane Wilson, the second by John Payne. Any discussion on the motion? John?
In our work session, it was discussed that this is going to be considered a one-time, a one-time thing. And I know there was also some discussion about monies that were potentially coming from other sources. So I just want us to present the big picture on the monies that we expect to be coming in in assistance of the deficit to the food banks that was incurred last month. And I was hoping our city administrator could speak to that.
Yes, during our work session, we did cover the, the resolution before you all tonight. We did reach out to some of our contacts in the church community. We was able to have them, a conversation with them. And they was more than willing to help donate also without naming them and not divulging who that is without their permission. I'll just say that we have, with this resolution, we have raised at least 15,000, potentially a little more than that. Yeah, I think that pretty well answers the question.
Thank you. Any more further discussion on the motion to approve and adopt Resolution Number 20-2025? Jerry?
Should I wait and get Sean to explain it in his, you know, when the city administrator report asked a question here about it?
It's up to you.
Sean, if you don't care, explain to the people, the public, actually what we're doing. We're giving $5,000 and who the checks wrote to and why it's a one-time event and let the public understand.
Yeah, when we reached out to our city attorney, he was very evident and exact of how this should be done. This should be done by resolution and then a memorandum of understanding between the two pantries, God's Provision and the Berea Food Pantry. He felt like that this was doable as a one-time event. And we felt like that, along with Mr. Gilbert, that we would prefer to purchase the food with the $2,500 each for each agency and then divide that out between the two organizations. So we will be spending $5,000 with God's Pantry, which we can get more food for our dollar going through them. And then we will bring that food to City Hall or the food pantries and divide that between the two. So the donation will be going directly to God's pantry.
And the reason for this is because of the shutdown. If you want to touch about that just a little?
Yeah, that is correct. As far as the federal shutdown went and how it affected each food bank, they had a very influx of people that needed food and kind of, I guess somewhat panicked a little bit. And, and you can, you can imagine when you don't have those funds available to you and what that would mean to you if you was less fortunate. So they did reach out to our two food banks and they seen that, that draw on their finances and their food supply. And we just want to help replenish their food supply for a month that brings them back up to a normal operating level. So that's all we're doing with this money. We're not doing anything to exceed their expectations or their, their draw on what happened. It's just more or less to get them back to a normal operating place. Thank you for a good report.
Further discussion on the motion to adopt Resolution 20-2025? John?
And just to clarify, we're attempting to, to help, you know, raise up the deficit that was produced last month because of the, the lack of SNAP funding. There is a continued need for these food banks. I know Berea Food Bank specifically accepts donations, financial donations in person and on the website. They have a link, I believe, to a PayPal account. I would suspect our other food pantry has the same, the same setup. And they'll have continuing needs throughout the year. So even though this is a one-time contribution on behalf of city government, it should not be a one-time contribution from the members of our community.
Any further discussion on the motion to approve and adopt Resolution Number 20-25? Seeing none, our request of a voice vote, all in favor of the motion to approve Resolution 20-2025? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. The motion carries and Resolution 20-2025 is approved and adopted. The next item on the agenda is Ordinance Number 14-2025, revising Public Works Crew Superintendent Pay Grade. And this is the second reading. Mr. Gilbert?
Having read Ordinance Number 14-2025 in its entirety at the first reading, I will summarize the ordinance by title. An ordinance of the City of Berea, Kentucky revising the pay scale grade for Public Works Crew Superintendent from grade eight to grade nine.
This is the second reading. Is there a motion to approve and adopt Ordinance Number 14-2025? By Ronnie Terrell with a second by Jerry Little? Is there any discussion on the motion to approve and adopt Ordinance Number 14-2025? Are you ready for the question? All right, we'll move to a voice vote and I'll begin with Katie Startsman.
Aye.
John Payne? Ronnie Terrell?
Aye.
Cora Jane Wilson?
Aye.
Jerry Little?
Aye.
And Teresa Centers?
Aye.
Motion carries and Ordinance Number 14-2025 is approved and adopted. The next item on the agenda is Ordinance Number 15-2025, 2025 Surplus. Second reading, Mr. Gilbert?
Having read Ordinance Number 15-2025 in its entirety at the first reading, I'll summarize the ordinance by title. An ordinance of the City of Berea, Kentucky declaring certain property to be surplus and authorizing it to be sold.
Is there a motion to approve and adopt Ordinance Number 15-2025 by Teresa Centers? And a second by John Payne? Is there any discussion on the motion to approve and adopt the ordinance?
Well, I feel like it's always Ronnie or Jerry that asks, but can you explain when this is going to go live and how it's going to be?
It will be done on GovDeals. And if this is approved, it'll be done relatively quickly. I think there's a, what Sean, several weeks that it has to stay online and?
Yeah, at least two weeks.
Mm-hmm. And then Chris Walsh from Public Works takes care of making sure that it's paid for and picked up and gets with Susan and Sean to make sure that all works. It's, it's a very efficient process and it's a good way to recover tax dollars, citizens' tax dollars for equipment that we no longer need. Welcome. Any further discussion?
One more, Bruce.
Jerry?
Like Katie said, you've got to go on GovDeals.com though to bid on this stuff. And you just go to GovDeals.com, if you want to import Berea, Kentucky, and it'll pull up what's for sale. And you can sit there and bid and you can watch what it is over the, you know, the couple of weeks. It's a good process. It's fair and everything. I just want people to know how to bid on it.
Thank you, Jerry. Any further discussion on the motion to approve and adopt Ordinance 15-2025? Are you ready for the question? All right, we'll move forward with the vote. And this time we'll begin with Teresa Centers.
Aye.
Jerry Little?
Aye.
Cora Jane Wilson?
Aye.
Ronnie Terrell?
Aye.
John Payne?
Aye.
And Katie Startsman?
Aye.
Motion carries and Ordinance Number 15-2025 is approved and adopted. The next item on the agenda is Ordinance Number 16-2025, Advanced Metering Infrastructure Condition of Utility Services. And this is the first reading, Mr. Gilbert?
Whereas Berea Municipal Utilities, BMW, is a municipally-owned utility operating under the authority granted by Kentucky law to provide electric water and wastewater services within the City of Berea and surrounding service areas. And whereas BMU will be implementing Advanced Metering Infrastructure, AMI, technology to improve service reliability, enhance meter accuracy, increase operational efficiency, and provide customers with real-time usage information. And whereas the installation and use of AMI meters are necessary for BMU to maintain system integrity, perform accurate billing, and ensure equitable service among all customers. Now therefore be ordained by the City Council of the City of Berea, Kentucky as follows. One, that the city code is hereby amended to enact Section 31-023 so that such section shall read as follows. Advanced Metering Infrastructure. A, there is a definition section. B, provides for the term of service requirement. C, provides for ownership and access. D, provides for privacy and data security. E, provides for customer information. F, provides for enforcement. Failure to comply with this ordinance or by implementing policy adopted by BMU shall constitute a violation of BMU Terms of Service. BMU may take enforcement actions including suspension or termination of services consistent with established rules due and due process requirements. Section two, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith are repealed. This ordinance shall be published according to law.
And that is the first reading with the second reading scheduled for December the 16th? I got a question. December the, yeah, December the 16th. But per practice, I'll open the floor for discussion. Jerry?
Do what?
You have a floor. Right ahead.
Would it be all right for Kevin just to tell the public in real short terms what this means? What is advanced metering? This, you know, the public out there may not understand what this is. Don't make no big long story out of it. This didn't, this, this where the public can understand it.
With that objection, we'll recognize Berea Municipal Utilities General Manager Kevin Howard. Kevin, you have one minute.
Councilman Little, you've heard me speak before. So, so AMI, we've been discussing this for a while now. It's the next step we're taking in our, in our electric and water metering, advanced metering infrastructure. What we have now is AMR is the, is the drive-by meters, if you will. Where we're driving by this advanced metering infrastructure sends out more signal. It, it gives more live data for customers to use. And we're going to begin installing those at, at, at start of January. We've already got all the residential water and electric meters in-house. Basically with, with this ordinance, we're just saying that that's going to be the only meter that we offer from that point forward.
And this is for water and electric, correct?
Water and electric, yes.
I've got a question. Can, with this advanced metering, can you cut the electric off from the, from the office now for somebody who's wanting to turn their electric on and off?
That, that's correct. On, on the electric meters, you, you do have that capability.
So you don't have to send nobody out anymore. You can turn it off at the office and you can turn it back on at the office.
Correct.
That's, that's a?
That's, that's non-payments, that's move-ins, move-outs, that, you know, that covers all of the different.
And will they be a, used to, we had a pretty good fee to turn it on and off. What would a fee be on this? Will there be one?
Yeah, there's, there's still a, you know, a connection fee on that. There, there's still going to be some, some time involved with that. And as of now, we've not changed those, those connection fees.
So it's still going to cost the same, even though you can sit in the office and do it then? You don't have to send nobody out?
You know, that, that, that's correct. As of right now, we do not, if, if we want to look at those fees at a later time, once we, once we get these installed and see how much time we're actually saving on those.
Okay, so it's something we might look at in the future then?
Certainly, anytime we?
One more question. Will a customer be able to go up and say, put $100 on his account or 125 and get a monitor on it, how much is he using?
That, that is a goal. You know, many of the utilities around us that are electric only, they do that. It's prepaid, if you will. That's why they call that. And we, we are planning on eventually getting there in another phase, once we get this.
But not at this point?
Not, not right now, on this first phase of just moving them in and getting the system up and going. The, the difficult part of that is, you know, where it's electric water and sewer utility. If you give $50, you know, how much of that's going to be electric water, sewer? So, so there, there's a couple of utilities that we're been in conversation with that are looking at that. We're watching them really closely. I actually spoke to, to one of the utilities a couple of weeks ago. They've been trying to implement that for about six months. They're not hardly there, you know, and they're similar to us. They're electric, water, and sewer.
It would really help some residents. It would be, it would be a really good thing if we get it implemented.
Agree. And, and billing as well, you know, that, that would be, we, we hope to offer that service. Anyway, possible, we will.
Thanks for that one minute then, okay?
Thank you. Next is Ronnie?
Kevin, you want, this doesn't mean you increase any employees. I mean, you won't have to have any new employees to handle this.
Correct. We do, we do not plan on increasing.
What about decreasing?
There, there's no plans to decrease.
I was just, yeah.
All right. Any further discussion? Katie?
Just a quick question. So is there anything that residents or homeowners need to be aware of while this is happening? Or this is just going to happen automatically? They're going to have new water meter and new electric meter?
Yeah, we, we will be on site, each one of our metering locations. We will have a crew out there that's going to be changing out the electric meters, water meters. We're, we're going to be doing a lot of public outreach, letting them know what areas we're going to be in. You know, we could do door hangers the day before, whatever we need to do there. But we will be in close communication with our customers, let them know when we'll be in the area.
Cool. Thank you. Just a quick follow-up. So it's starting in January? And then were you projecting to have it done? So it's starting in January and then were you projecting to have it done by the summer, by June?
So, so the electric meter, it's very aggressive.
Okay.
Uh, the, six months, we're, we're going to do all the electric meter changeouts in-house. Uh, we're using our own, that, that was some overall savings on the total project cost. We'd like to do that in-house. Uh, that, that's a quicker process. You know, you, you got one or two guys can hit a street and, and get that street changed out and, and, you know, short amount of time. Now the water meters, take a little more time, you're, and, you know, you're under the ground. You're, you're, then the connections underground. A lot of times mud, water involved there. Uh, that, there is a third party doing that. We're hoping to do that in the year, in the calendar year twenty-six. And we are, we do have the aggressive goal of being, uh, all the electric meters being changed out at the end of June of twenty-six.
Okay, further discussion on the first reading of the ordinance. Thank you, Kevin, for jumping in there. Good discussion. Uh, the next item on the agenda is ordinance number seventeen dash twenty twenty-five, water sewer cubic feet to gallon equivalent rate. And this is a first reading. Mr. Gilbert.
The final ordinance tonight, ordinance number seventeen dash twenty twenty-five, will be summarized by title. An ordinance of the city of Berea, Kentucky revising section thirty-two point one oh-three of the city code to amend Berea Municipal Ord, Utilities Water Rate Schedule for Water Supply Service to revise section thirty-one point three-eight-three of the Berea City Code to amend the sewer rate schedule for sewer service and to add section thirty-one three-three-five to the Berea City Code providing for regulations for low pressure force mains.
And again, this is the first reading of ordinance number seventeen dash twenty twenty-five with the second reading scheduled for two weeks at our next meeting on December the sixteenth. But per past practice, we'll open the floor for any discussion on the first reading. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll move forward to department head reports. And I'm glad to welcome back Amanda Haney, our administrator in the Codes and Planning Department. Amanda, you have the floor.
Thank you, good evening. And just a few days, I will be celebrating a fifteen-year milestone as a city employee. Um, so if you will indulge me, this codes update may be a little more personal. I felt a deeply rooted connection to Berea even when I first started working here as my dad went to Berea College and worked at Boone Tavern for his labor hours. And I had a couple aunts who graduated here. And so I just had a feeling that there were likely some, some fine folks in this area. At that time, fifteen years ago, Jerry Little was in that interview room. That very intimidating inter- Yes, my hair was a different color. And I don't think anybody in this, you know, they're all different faces except for Jerry Little. Yeah, in my interview, but and on council. Yeah, council was different, mayor was different, so. We could quickly form though, a, a good working relationship, likely because we both value hard work and we are both get-it-done kind of people. In fact, what I have found in this community is that it is full of hard-working, driven people who love their community and I'm very proud to be a part of it. In the recent city, uh, state of the city address, the mayor spoke to the community about how it takes us all. To add to his sentiments, it does. It takes the council and it takes the dedicated department heads I work with every day and the city staff and the five amazing people that I work with in the codes office and business owners and industry and Berea College and community members who are willing to grow bagel businesses from a small commercial kitchen to a stable that we all love. I'm thankful to have been a part of this community. I'm not sure if you have noticed, but it seems like there's construction everywhere. Our small office of six has reviewed, permitted, and inspected over a hundred and six million dollars for the building construction in the last two years. And that does not include infrastructure, sewers, waters, that is building construction. We are bringing in new record numbers of permits and I can tell you it takes a community to do that. We work with some of the hardest-working home builders, contractors, electricians, H V A C contractors, and that's sometimes just on Monday. We work with local land surveyors, civil engineers, architects, persistent developers, and some extra persistent developers. But they're some of the finest, hardest-working people that I know and it takes us all. Overall, I'm so proud to work for a city who cares about the people and who works hard to make sure that we have everything that we need from popping pickleball courts and shared-use paths to, and land for industrial expansion. This evening, I'm proud to inform you that at a recent K Y T C update, Mady Road Extension Project should be lit in February. And so we will see soon the result of six hard years of work from the mayor and the staff and that diligence that has gone into expanding our community. I want to commit in the coming year to improving our office efficiency and improve the information, availability of information, which I think is important when we have this high-growth rate. Mayor, city administrator, thank you to both of you. I look forward to continuing the hard work and support of your vision. Thank you. And I will take questions.
Thank you, Amanda. I will just say, I appreciate that personal account of your service and I congratulate you on your fifteenth anniversary with the city coming up. So thank you for that. We'll open the floor for questions or comments for Amanda.
I just wanted to say-
Cora Jane and then Teresa. Sorry, Teresa, you got scooped.
I just wanted to say that we're lucky to have you. I really, I feel that from the bottom of my heart. Berea is lucky to have you and to have you over that department and you do a great job. I'm not just saying that, they know, it's-
Thank you.
I mean it. And thank, no, thank you for the job you do and just everything. Thank you.
Just Amanda, I've got something more to say.
Hang on, Jerry, let me get Teresa and I will come back to you. Teresa's been waiting patiently.
Oh, no, it's fine. You scared me to death. I could hear the emotion in your voice and I thought, she's not going to announce her retirement.
No. But-
Glad, 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 glad you take your job that seriously. I know that you do and, and I, I can feel your heart in it and we all thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry?
I said on Amanda's interview fifteen years ago, we interviewed her for, for the job and she's done an incredible job in the last fifteen years. She's come a long ways and, and she's doing the right thing and I just appreciate you, Amanda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, them fifteen years have been quick, Amanda. They've been hard on me, okay? I'll say, thank you.
Sure I have, yeah.
Katie?
Thank you so much for your comments and your leadership is benefiting the city in so many ways. I don't want to put you on the spot, but being in the Comprehensive Planning Committee meeting last week really made me reflect on how unique our community is. And you're in such a special position of seeing the kind of risks and challenges or how we're growing or something like, what's your, what are you thinking about for the future? Or what's on your radar? What do you think we should be thinking about as we continue to move into that next five years?
Oh, that is a, that is a great question. We had some really good conversation with our, with our Comprehensive Plan Group. I think that probably opened my eyes too to see, we are doing the work right now that the people are asking for in the next twenty years. You know, our plan is a twenty-year plan. And what I realized in that meeting is the things that they are asking for are the things that we are working on. And, and so that is in all departments, you know, not just codes and planning and not just develop, not just smart development and growth, but really just how people relate to our city and the city amenities and really just feeling that sense of community. And as you can tell, you know, I feel that sense of community. I think a lot of people do. Thank you.
Questions or comments for Amanda? John?
I just wanted to say that I wanted to thank you and your staff. Every time I've come to you guys with an issue or a question, you've always been very responsive, very, very knowledgeable and it has helped, helped me out both professionally and personally.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Are there questions or comments for Amanda? Seeing none, I do want to take the liberty, just real quickly, I had this in, to mention in mayor's comments, but since you just mentioned it on the Comprehensive Plan, just to make sure that everybody is aware, the Comprehensive Planning Process takes place every five years. And one of the things that I can remember going back before my service on council even was that the Codes and Planning Office and in that Comprehensive Planning Process, they always wanted feedback from the people. And it's like there was not enough feedback coming in. You, you can't get enough. So Amanda, if you would, address just a little bit about, we're, we're coming to the end of that, but there's still time for input. There's still time for review. Would you talk just a little bit about how everyday citizens can participate in that Comprehensive Planning Process between now and the time that we wrap it up and we're kind of locked in for five years?
Yeah, so we've had a public survey out for quite a bit. We got about five hundred responses from that. We're able to connect with about three hundred people through the Spoonbread Festival and other events. There will be a couple more opportunities for public outreach. As of today, I don't have those dates, but, but there's a website go-to. If you go to bereaky.gov, there is a link to the Comprehensive Plan website and that will give citizens information about when meetings are, has copy, has the survey on it, has all the links on it. And, and like I say, we really have gotten a lot of good feedback.
Good, and there'll be another public meeting.
There will be at least one more public meeting. As of today, I don't have the date of that meeting. We anticipate it will definitely be after the first of the year.
Good, thank you. I was going to cover that encouraging participation and you just did that. Thank you for opening the door on that.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, Amanda, thank you.
Thank you. And if you don't mind, I'd like to be dismissed. We had early morning start this morning and again in the morning.
See you tomorrow, see you tomorrow. Thank you. Would any other department heads like to address the council? I see Priscilla standing up. Okay, Priscilla, that's like raising your hand at an auction. You can't do that. All right, seeing, seeing none, we'll move forward to the city administrators' report and I'll recognize Sean Sandlin. Sean, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Working with Amanda and the professionalism that she brings to the office each and every day and her staff is just truly amazing and an honor to work with her. Along with all of our employees, we had an employee appreciation meal today at lunch and just having the opportunity to speak with them outside of, you know, working every day and, and we're taking in a meal together. It was, it was great, just to let them know that we do appreciate them and I'm honored to work with all of them. Just want to also take a minute to thank Dan Kiersting and his team at Enrich. I know Dan professionally in our careers for a short time and outside of that, working with him and, and hearing his vision and his detail and driven, focused on his mission is, is truly eye-opening to me when I sat down with them, him and the mayor one day. It's just a great work that they're working on. So I just wanted to let him know that we appreciate all of that. Also, Kent and the Madison County Enrich National Committee, thank them for all the work that they do. I was able to take part in the delegation in twenty nineteen and such a great opportunity to represent the city in Japan and, and to see the culture and how they operate and things that they do is, is just amazing. And just want to be thankful for this season and this time of year and, and I think that's all I have to report tonight is take any questions y'all may have.
Thank you, Sean. Questions for the city administrator? Comments? Y'all taking a cue from Amanda, they're ready to get out of here, Sean. Thank you. All right, the next, next item on the agenda is mayor's comments and I did mention the Comprehensive Plan earlier. But also for several weeks now, probably a good four or five weeks, there has been discussion about having a community forum and we are going to have a community resource forum on December the eighth, which is next Monday at six-thirty in the Acton Folk Center. We expect the announcement for that to come out tomorrow morning. Xenia, who is our community resource coordinator for the city, she's assigned to the police department, but she does work in many ways similar to what Dan does and I know they collaborate a lot. She is working just to finalize and make the announcement pretty. So hopefully we'll have that out on social media tomorrow and we'll be sending that to our friends in the, in the press corps and to others, the participants. We will have, the, the one thing, just I hadn't planned to say this, but Dan is a, is an example of one of many service providers, human service providers in Berea and Madison County. And as I began looking at this and how could we kind of highlight and feature, you know, what is available here and how Bereans, we're, we're titling this Bereans Helping Bereans. How can we help each other? What can we do locally to make a difference in people's lives? It occurred to me that I think the city of Berea, more than any community that I know of, has groups of people who genuinely care and want to help others and want to collaborate and help their neighbor more so than any community that I'm aware of. I think we're blessed with an abundance of human service providers. So it'll be a real pleasure to get many of those together. I don't want to start naming names because I don't want to forget anybody, but we will have, one segment of that forum will be for human service providers to do a short presentation of three to four minutes on their organization, who they are, what they do, how they can help, and how to get more information if you need it. The second part will be an interactive forum, an interactive discussion where people can ask questions and can interact with community partners that aren't necessarily going to present. Dan is actually, I think, part of your team is coming for that. Then we'll have others. I know Alicia, you're going to be there as well with Room in the Inn. So people will be able to interact and ask questions and it'll just be a community discussion really is the way we envision it. And Kent has actually volunteered to, to moderate that part and I'm really looking forward to that. But again, it's going to be at the Acton Folk Center, so look for more to come out tomorrow as the date that we targeted to get the announcement out where it was after Thanksgiving and not too early, but not too late either where people can plan to come. It's open to the public and everyone's invited. That concludes my comments and we'll next move to council comments and begin with Katie Startsman.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to attending that forum and this has been a really long meeting, but I'm really grateful to, we're, we're just so fortunate as a community. And Dan and the Enrich crew, I've been admiring y'all from afar and so I, I'm going to take you up on it. I want to come, take a tour and, and see more about what you all are doing. I'm, I'm grateful for the work that you're doing and the important kind of gaps you're filling and, and so that'll be, I'm looking forward to that and meeting you all. But otherwise, looking forward to the forum next week and thank you all.
Good, thank you, Katie. Next we'll move to John Payne.
I'd also like to thank everyone for coming out, being so patient. Thank you for the Hokuto update, that, very exciting. And, and our people from Enrich, thank you for coming and explaining the services and I want to be going through the website, learning a little bit more myself and I may have to schedule a, schedule a tour as well. Just want to wish everyone a, a good week and we've got a Christmas parade this Saturday. I hope everyone will come out. And I think there'll be music at Union Church this Saturday as well as, I, I seem to remember something about the mayor attending a tree lighting ceremony in front of Boone Tavern.
There is, that will be, as the parade goes through, as the parade concludes, I think the time should be around seven, give or take. So we're real excited to work with the community as a whole, the chamber and the college, collaborating together on, on that. It's a great opportunity for everyone.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, John. Next we'll move to Ronnie Terrell. Ronnie, you have the floor.
One thing, Bruce, the tree at the triangle will be having lights by the parade, right?
Yes.
Because the city is really looking nice and especially down by the park. I can't believe how much-
I can't believe how much, how pretty it is for this time of year, so that's all.
Thank you, Ronnie. And to your point, I'll interject compliments to Sean and Nancy, our tourism director, tourism commission, and there are a lot of people involved in that, so hats off to everybody involved with the decorations this year. Next, we'll move to Cor Jane Wilson. Cor Jane?
I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight and for the ones that spoke. Appreciate it, hearing, hearing from you, and the park, it looks great. It really, we drive by it twice a day, and it's just like, look at that. You see something new, you see something like, so we've got to get out and go. That's the thing, is everybody needs to actually just go and walk through it and see what all it has to offer, but thank you all for coming, and see you next time.
Thank you, Cor Jane. Next, we'll move to Jerry Little.
I just want to thank everybody for the good meeting we've had here this evening and the good information, and we've just had a good meeting, and I really appreciate it. Thank y'all, have a good holiday.
Thank you, Jerry, and for the last word, Teresa Centers. Teresa, you have the floor.
Well, I agree with everything everybody else has said, and, and I'm not going to repeat all that, but it's, it's been, it's made me feel good this evening to hear from all of you people who are being the hands and feet of Jesus, and I thank you. The community thanks you.
Thank you, Teresa. That brings us to the end of our agenda. There are a motion to adjourn by Cor Jane Wilson and a second by Ronnie Terrell. All in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. The meeting is adjourned.